Order the regular council meeting here on Tuesday, September 6th at 6:30 PM. We are live streaming at the W C O'Neil Arena Complex where we have people in attendance as well through our Facebook page and anyone that wants to join us through our Zoom system as well. At this particular time, we'll jump into the recording of attendance and good to see that all members of council are back in attendance. And just to start off, I want to recognize that we're on the unceded traditional territory of the Beskotomogati people. At this point, I'll be looking for a mover to approve the agenda circulate, but before we do that, there's a couple of additional handouts that we've had in our package. One of them is in regards to a walking lane which would be along Prince of Whale Street. Staff's kind of working along the budget due to municipal reform. I think it'd be good just to have a little temperature check on that one. So if you guys, if someone would move to add that under recreation, we could discuss it as a general item. I see Council Heenan a seconder, Council Goomishel, all in favor of that amendment. Please signify by saying aye. That's everybody that's been amended, so let's approve the agenda. I'll look for a mover to, for the actual agenda now that we've amended it. Deputy Mayor Akagi seconded by Councilor Goomishel, all in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's everybody. Disclosure of conflict of interest any for this evening? Seeing none of anything comes up, please let me know. So we will jump right into, at this point, presentations and we do have John Roca joining us. We've had a previous presentation from him, but there's an updated, I guess you could say, design for Bridle Path International and it is for 256 and 260 Water Street. It's a proposed development. At this point, I'll ask Mr. Roca to come forward and please address council.
Thank you, worship. Members of council, ladies and gentlemen, the revised concept that you see is really a second option that resulted from letters that you received and comments that we received by some citizens that felt that brick may not be the best material for the exterior of the property and also the recommendation of PAC and from some of the, many of the letters that wanted to have a better understanding of how the building fit into the, into the existing landscape of Water Street and Princess. So we have here for you, and I believe you have copies of it, the second alternative design. I will point out that if council does decide to, to approve our request for the height, that what you see here is not the final. Obviously, there's a number of other steps that we need to go through to ensure that the, that this project becomes a reality. First and foremost, if we do, is your approval. Secondly, we have to do the soil analysis and see whether a parking structure, an underground parking facility will work because obviously we believe, as many of the citizens believe, that we should be accommodating the vast majority of our parking requirements on the site. If that's not possible, we don't believe that the project can be viable. If we go beyond that step and the economics work, once we know what the parking costs, at that stage, then we have a viable project and we can proceed. And that's when we really drill down in the design. What you see here in these renderings is the conceptual design of the direction that we are going, not necessarily the final elements. There's been a number of concerns raised, especially the group that Mr. Douglas Greenaway represents, that they have many concerns which we believe are legitimate, fair and reasonable points that they have raised and we want to be able to sit down with them and work through those questions. So that's when we really get down to getting this design the way that we, we all hope it becomes and that is something that we can all be proud of. So that's, I think the most important thing that I really want to emphasize through, through these plans is those two renderings, for those who have not seen them, of, from both sides of Water Street that shows you the impact of a four-story building on the streetscape. And I, you know, I guess I'm obviously biased, but I, I think it, it does fit, that it's not out of character with, with the other heights. So that I think that, I wish I had done this earlier. I apologize to council and to the citizens that I think many of the questions and concern could have been addressed if we had done this earlier. So that is what I'd like people to focus on, that our fourth floor that we, that we do need does not really impact the streetscape and that it works well overall with the streetscape. In reviewing the letters that you have received, from what I have, there's roughly about nine letters of objections, seven in support. And of those nine letters of objection, there's only a, about a third of those are adamant that you should not approve a variance to the height. The rest of them are really concerns about how this building fits in the streetscape. The concern that they felt that this would overpower Water Street, I believe those renderings address those concerns. Of the ones that were in favor, the two that stood out to me, and again, I did not know these individuals, is the two individuals, one from Monten and a lady Adalma French, who are, have been part of this community and have had to leave because of health issues because there was not a building that was accessible for them and that they want to come back. So a community is more than just a built environment. The built environment is a reflection of the community and at the moment, there seems to be quite a need, not just, you know, a promotion of this project, but for others to include within future buildings accessible units so that people, as they age in your community, don't have to leave your community as people like Ms. French have had to leave. But the majority, as I said, are, are supportive of the, in principle, of the idea of you approving the height so long as there are other concerns have been addressed. And as I've, as you probably have, I, a copy of my letter to Mr. Greenaway where I specifically said, yes, we will work with you, we want your support, we want your, your, you at the table with us reviewing the design and we will address your concerns during construction, whether it's blasting or, or any, any other of the issues, including parking. And we are ready and willing to work with them as, as we are with you. That's all that I have to say. Your worship be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you traveling down and, and providing this updated plan for council. We've been copied on pretty much all the communication, if not all of it, that I assume you've received as well. And I can see in this latest design that you've incorporated some of that feedback that we've got as well. So at this time, I'll look to my left and right to see if any member of council has any particular questions to Mr. Roca. It's important to note that we do have a item later in tonight's agenda to discuss it. I think Mr. Gopin probably is going to have a bit of a presentation to us on development schemes, bylaws, my assumption. But council, any question for Mr. Roca directly at this time? All right. Mr. Roca, did you want to take anything from the audience tonight? Are you good just with the presentation, council?
Up to you, your worship. Be happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
I think I will because there is a lot of people here this evening and want to give as many opportunities for dialogue as possible. So if anyone from the audience would have a question, I'll certainly give you an opportunity to raise your hand, just ask you when you come up to the podium to say your name and your address and to speak into the mic so anyone that's watching from home can hear you as well.
Mayor Henderson, your worship, Kate Akagi, deputy mayor, members of council. My name is Michael Anstey and I've lived at 41 Princess Royal Street for the last 26 years and I've heard a lot of rumors around town that this is all being, all the opposition is being pushed by come-from-aways and parachute people. I'm here to tell you that there's five or six people that can throw a rock from their property to hit that property on 256, 260 Water Street who've got some valid concerns. And basically, I, I want to make sure that the letter that we sent to you guys this morning with a series of questions regarding the Bridle Path development has entered into this record at this evening's meeting. And a copy of the letter was shared with Alex Henderson and Chris Spear and I also have a copy here, but I think you guys have got it, but I'm not sure. And I guess this all hinges on what's going to happen later tonight with Amendment MP And since this development falls within the Town Platte, specifically the historical business district, which is a very small area, it's covered by MP 20-02, which was adopted by council in December of 2020. And in section 2.2.2 of that plan, it states that the council shall use the zoning bylaw and design manual to regulate development within the historic business district in the Town Platte. And we would like to know how council sees Bridle Path project, proposed project satisfying and complementing, satisfying and complimenting the town's municipal plan and secondary municipal plan. And some of the things that we're concerned about, and again, is the totality of the project and the, and the building footprint. For me, it's more about massing and scale than anything else. And if this amendment is passed exempting it from the height restriction, does that also exempt it from the other restrictions on massing and scale or the other? It said, it says the following is required in the plan. It is proposed that new buildings, construction alterations in addition shall respect the general pattern of massing and scale in the general vicinity and adjacent properties. This may be achieved in one of three ways, identical to another main residential building or structure, average of the main residential buildings on the same block or within 10% tolerance. And actually, there's a picture here that shows what's, what, what is, what they consider appropriate massing and structure and what would they consider not at the same scale. And basically, we're contending that-
If, if, I hate to interrupt, but it's question, it's like questions for the developer and I know you have a lot to say. We have received that communication. It's just if everybody has a hearing of objections tonight, which this meeting's not, unfortunately, we're not going to get through the agenda. So if you had a question specific to the developer, that's what this period is. And, and again, I understand we have received that communication. I think when we get into this with council tonight, they're going to have to have a primary, when it comes down to the first step is to say, what do they think of this height? That, to me, and there's 20 questions that was in that, that email that we received earlier today, so I've received it. A lot of those will not be answered tonight, to be completely candid about it, because before we get into all, every single detail of it, I need to know if this council is confident in the height. So I really understand where you're coming from. I know you want to have a voice, that's why we have a hearing objections, but tonight it was a presentation from the developer, so it's questions pertaining to that presentation. And I hate to interrupt you because I want to hear, but it's just because there's more than one person here.
So when we get to Mr. Roca, and I appreciate you, you're going through this again. From my point of view, on 41 Princess Royal Street, that still looks like a college dormitory to me.
Okay.
And that's, that's me and I've got to look at that every morning when I get up. So questions I would have is that, so I would guess that we would have maybe 50 new residents, 25 new cars, thereabouts, for 36 units?
Yeah, I think, I think-
I mean, that's already a congested corner and I don't know what adding that many more residents, that many more cars in that little area is going to do for, for traffic flow and parking and pedestrian concerns. So basically, those would be the questions and concerns that I have and-
Perfect.
That's my, my say.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate that. And if there's anything that I didn't give you an opportunity, please send an email because all of council does get a copy of that because I do hear what you are saying and I know that there is a combined letter from residents in the area that are highlighting a number of those concerns as well. So those will be addressed and probably some conversation pertaining to them will actually happen later tonight. I don't know if it's fair for Mr. Roca to have an opportunity to respond to that.
And I'm not against development on this property because I, I know that this is Jeff's property and it, it's his right to develop it. I just wanted to make sure that it fits within, like, for me, this is the historic Town Platte, so.
Yep. Perfect. Mr. Roca?
Yes, your worship, through you, to the gentleman, we will be sitting down with, if you approve the height, we will sit down with the residents in the area, especially the ones most impacted because they are entitled to that consideration and discuss the facade that they're concerned about on Princess. It just, the question is, how do we get balconies and how do you express that? So we'd be, you know, again, it's not something that we are married to, that there is only one way, our way. It's whatever the, the public is happy with and especially the neighbors. And on the parking, we share the same concern. We, we must have that underground parking and if we do have that underground parking, I don't believe that there's going to be a significant impact because a lot of the residents then are able to walk if they want groceries, if they, if they need to go to the drugstore. It's all within walking distance so they're not constantly getting in and out of the car to go to various places. So I think, I think at the end of the day, the traffic impact, there will be some, obviously, but I think it will be manageable if we can get that underground parking.
Thank you. Any other questions pertaining to the presentation this evening?
So I want to build on what Mr. Anstey has shared and this is not so much a response to Mr. Roca because I will say this.
Sorry?
Sure. Douglas Greenaway and I'm representing the 25 families that, households that have signed on to the initial letter that you received, as well as the follow-up questions that you've received.
Perfect. But just to be clear, Mr. Greenaway, are you addressing council or asking questions to the presentation? Just because I, this is not usually a process we do to open up to the public, but we have a big agenda tonight and I really appreciate we've received multiple communication from you. We will deal it, but I just want to make sure these are questions to the presenter and not added on for a hearing of objections.
So Mr. Henderson, I appreciate your feedback. I'm not trying to take up too much time, so if you allow me just to get to the three questions that I had-
Oh, perfect, yeah.
-that were actually Mr. Anstey's questions. So these are questions I think that council needs to consider, Mr. Roca needs to consider as well as he furthers his development, and that is, in addition to the building height, the building footprint, massing and scaling, the architectural vernacular of the historic district and traffic flow, parking and pedestrian concerns. All of those fit within the secondary municipal pan, plan, and I think they're really relevant for you to consider as you think about this project going forward. To echo Mr. Anstey's point, nobody on the 25, of the 25 households wants to stop, block, prevent development of this site and I think there's a misperception of that, so I just want to be clear and echo what Mr. Anstey has said. So those are the questions that we have, we hope you will think about as you think about the height amendment. It cannot be considered simply in isolation. So thank you for your time. Yes, sir?
Thank you.
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify, what was the second question? You, I got the first and the third.
So the, the first question, actually, the totality of the project, so in its entirety, the building height, the building footprint, massing and scale, the architectural vernacular of the historic district and the traffic flow, parking and pedestrian concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else question for the developer?
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate those questions and we will be discussing it later and council will probably be talking about some of those items that you mentioned, but really it comes down to, with the secondary municipal plan, the thing that needs the exemption is the height. It's not actually the architecture, but since there is a height request to change, it does give us the opportunity to weigh in on the other items that you did mention in your presentation. I appreciate that. All right, council, that's it for presentations for this evening. At this point, we're going to get into some minutes from some previous meetings, so I'll be looking for, first of all, does any member of council in the three sets of minutes have anything they want to flag to me? Otherwise, I will fly through these as I always do. Okay? Then I'll fly through them. The first are the minutes of the 22-08-02 regular council meeting on Tuesday, August 2nd to 2022 at 6:30 PM. Be looking for a mover to approve those minutes. I've got Councilor Heenan seconded by Councilor Hurdle, all in favor of adopting those minutes. Please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? There's none, those are carried. The minutes of the 22-08-15 public hearing objection to Amendment MP 20-02-01, the secondary municipal plan, MP 20-02 on Monday, August 15th, 2002, 6:30 PM. Be looking for a mover for those minutes. Councilor Neal seconded by Councilor Blanchard, all in favor of approving those minutes. Please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, that's been carried. Minutes of the 22-08-15 regular council meeting on Monday, August 15th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Mover please? Got, woo, three. We'll go Deputy Mayor Akagi seconded by Councilor Hurdle, all in favor of approving those minutes. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is everybody, so all of our minutes have been approved. We do have some communications to, tonight. The first would be on page 25 of your package. It's in regards to the Two Meadows property, just to make the public aware that they may see a request for proposals regards to this property to see how it can serve Sunbury Shores. Right now, it is zone green space, so if it was to be developed in any way, that would require us to go through the entire process, obviously, which would require three readings plus a hearing of objections, but it's just more or less to, to let the, I guess you could say, council and the public know that they are putting a request for proposals out to see if there is any interest. Ideally, there's a lot of things that Sunbury Shores could use, including not, not just storage, but office space, exhibit function space, studio workshop, to see if there's maybe a partnership between maybe a housing development and space for them, but is there anything I should add to that, Mr. Spear? Do you think that probably sums it up for this point?
Probably sums it up, your worship. Just, so like you said, no one was surprised and really they've got to see, you know, it's an expression of interest. So it's really to see what's offered out there as opposed to very specific requirements like sometimes the town's looking for. So that will go out and, and then I suspect it'll probably be early into the new year before they'll come back with anything, if anything.
Thank you. Absolutely.
This is not about the U N B land, just the two acres that belongs to, or the two spaces that belong to Sunbury Shores, correct?
Correct, from the letter, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mr. Spear. Appreciate that. And at this point, we're going to actually jump over to a report from you, so it's good transition for the staff report to summarize monthly activity for the town of St. Andrews.
Thank you, worship. Council, it's extremely hard to believe we are now past Labor Day and I am presenting the September report for the town of St. Andrews. It has been extremely busy few months and with local government reform taking place over the fall, the year promises to go out with flurry, pun intended, winter flurry. Council, on August 26th, the mayor, several councilors and the C A O attended a public information session given by Kelly Cove Salmon concerning a land-based smolt facility in Bayside. The new facility situated in industrial park is going through an environmental impact assessment concerning many elements associated with it. For the communities, the primary concern is the potential effect the water requirement will have on Sham Cook Lake and neighboring wells. The facility is using wells in the watershed area as well as seawater. We are keeping very close attention to the process as well as analyzing the data to address the concerns of all the citizens in the area. There are two housing initiatives that have piqued the interest of many residents, being Bridle Path International, 256, 260 Water Street and Compass Housing at 310 Moak Drive. Both developers are reviewing their site plans and conceptual drawings to try to alleviate some of the fears in the neighborhood. Consequently, both have gone through first reading only of their affected bylaws as council continues to review them. The secondary municipal plan amendment discussion is on the agenda tonight, but a motion of council is not expected. More information has been provided by the facilitator for the Regional Service Commission on the expected budgets for 2023. The information allows us to analyze the financial cost to the increased services of the commission. We can start to put together our own budget based on some of the information being provided. Earlier this summer, council decided to place the dog park at Harry Mallory Sports Field. Staff are going to be reviewing the available options for placement around the facility and report back to council. In the meantime, for those wishing to make a donation towards this initiative, we are accepting payments at Town Hall either electronically, by cash check or credit card. Administration, this fall, we'll be transitioning to paper bags as part of the leafbag program. The primary reason we are doing this is that the plastic bags are not compostable and requires a significant later to rip them open, dump the leaves and dispose of the plastic. Once transitioned, the bags will be dumped and crushed with a backhoe. The Second Annual Dragon Boat Festival was held on August 27th at Katie's Cove. Ten teams participated with members from far away as Nova Scotia. We wish to acknowledge and thank the St. Andrews Paddling Club for organizing this successful event and for providing additional rowers for the town entry. We gave it our all, we gave it our best, but alas, we did not win gold. Or silver or bronze. We are beginning the process of putting together the municipal fall newsletter for our residents. We see many people recycle the mail out before it ever reaches their home, but there is practical information in it regarding services for the public. I highly recommend taking it home, reviewing it and making note of the relevant information that piques your interest. In addition, if you have any suggestions on what you'd like to see in the newsletter, please reach out to Town Hall for consideration. I am pleased to announce the tall ship, Na'ou Trinidad will be at the war from September 29th to October 1st. They will be hosting tours throughout the days and if the last tall ship is any indication, it should jaw quite a crowd. I would also like to mention that the Second Annual Beer Fest will be held September 23rd to 25th in the town. It is encouraging that these events outside the normal summer season to encourage more visitors for our tourism operators within the town. This will be followed by the Indulged Wine and Food Festival in October. Services, I would like to start off by thanking our summer students and seasonal workers who choose to work with us this year. We realize you have an opportunity to work in other locations due to the ongoing labor shortage, so we truly appreciate your services to, to the town this year. The town librarian, Leslie Wells, mentioned in her report that she now has access to a publication entitled Aging in New Brunswick, A Resource Guide to Assess Older Adults and Their Caregivers in Navigating the Wide Variety of Services Within the Province. As a larger portion of the population is beginning to reach the age of 75 and older, families and professional caregivers will play a bigger role to provide a good quality of life. The summer programming is also completed and they had a successful season with lots of participants and junior readers going through several hundred novels. There are two projects of interest from the clerk who has been participating that should be noted to the public. He submitted an application to the National Trust to do more in-depth community consultation and long-term planning of our heritage assets like the Ross Memorial Museum, the Charlotte County Courthouse and Jail, and the partnerships at the Block House and Sheriff Andrews House. He also submitted multiple applications for funding for various projects throughout town with considerable success. We rely on these external grants from various agencies to take on capital expenditures that we otherwise may not be able to afford. All the in-ground infrastructure projects are completed and property remediation should be finished. Actually, I can confirm it isn't finished. We're still waiting on some of the grass people to come back, that's odd, to fill out some of the things. The engineering company and the operations manager have completed a walkthrough of all the projects to identify any deficiencies that need to, need to be addressed. Phase one of the Van Horn Trail Extension will be taking place in September and October, which includes an off-trail lane parallel to Cemetery Road that will meet up with the trail that goes to Rose Lane. The stopped-up portion of Brandy Cove Road going through the golf course will be pulverized, made a bit narrower and a new layer of ash what will be added. Staff have also been busy working with multiple developers in helping them identify our infrastructure around their properties they can tie in- around their properties they can tie into or avoid building onto in any concerns that we may have with their projects. With every building permit and development request through the Service Commission, the development staff always comes back to us for input and recommendations. I would suggest that anyone who is looking to connect a town water or sewer to get in touch with us early to help you with your planning and design process. The youth center completed their final three weeks of day camps aimed at youth under the age of 12, with all camps booked to capacity. This has been an ongoing initiative for close to 10 years, and we are grateful to staff and the volunteers in organizing and carrying this off. There was also a 3-in-3 basketball tournament held in August that was open to all ages and would understand quite a success. In conclusion, despite summer just being over, we are preparing ourselves for the winter, and will start the process of installing the ice in late September. After such a busy summer and a chance to clear your head, we encourage business operators to reach out with any thoughts on the one-way street or any initiatives we can do to increase the economic opportunities here in St. Andrews. Also a reminder that the National Truth and Reconciliation Day happens on September 30th, and we encourage everyone to take time to reflect on the continuing impacts residential schools had and take advantage of several resources that discuss this issue. Thank you, Worship. Chris Spear, Treasurer.
Thank you. Formerly the Treasurer. Yeah. All right, council, you've got a copy of all the staff reports. Anything you want to highlight first, though, Mr. Spear, in regards to the financial reports at this time?
I guess just to say, Worship, we had concerns about the snow removal this past winter. As we've mentioned, all the storms seemed to be on weekends, and the solid budget took quite a beating. However, there's been some savings within capital, and specifically, if you remember last meeting, we stopped asphalt from going through this year just because of the horrific price increases. So we should be well to stay on budget this year and less concerns that we will have a large deficit.
Perfect. Good news, to say the least. Any member of council have any questions in regards to any of the staff reports this evening? Okay, I'll look for someone to move to accept the staff report as presented. Got Councillor Neal seconded by Councillor Keenan. I'll give that one to him this time, Councillor Hurdle. All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye. Everybody's staff reports have been accepted. So we are moving along to the introduction consideration and passing of bylaws and motions. The first one, after having a meeting off, we're back to Deputy Mayor Akagi.
Thank you, Your Worship. Reference number FA220909, and this is a proclamation-
Deputy Mayor, your microphone, please.
Oh, you didn't point your finger.
I'm so sorry.
Ah, slipping, sorry. So, reference number FA220909, and it's proclamation for fetal alcohol spectrum disorder, September 2022. The Town of St. Andrews has received a request from the Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorder Newfoundland and Labrador and Atlantic Canada to proclaim September 2022 as Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorder Awareness Month. By promoting accurate and credible information, FASDNL is focused on increasing awareness of FAD and related issues among individuals, families, and communities. Such awareness efforts will assist in the prevention of FAD and increase support and function for those, for functioning for those affected by FASD. If proclaimed, FASDNL would like a copy of the signed proclamation and a photo of the signing of the proclamation to help putting FAD on the map as part of their campaign. Please see the attached proclamation for review and consideration by council. So before I go to the motion, could I please read the letter, Your Worship?
The entire letter, or?
Yes, it's very pertinent.
Okay, sure.
Hello, my name, her name, is Laura Squires, and she works with a wonderful organization known as FASDNL. She's writing to us today because fetal alcohol spectrum disorder matters. FASD is the leading cause of developmental disability in Canada, with approximately 1.4 million Canadians impacted. FASDNL works to educate, network, and share resources to improve the lives of individuals and families and communities across Newfoundland and Labrador. We are currently leading a multi-year FASD project in Atlantic Canada funded by the Public Health Agency of Canada. By promoting accurate and credible information, FASDNL is focused on increasing the awareness of FASD and related issues among individuals, families, and communities. We believe that such awareness efforts will assist in the prevention of FASD as well as to increase support and functioning for those affected by FASD. On behalf of their executive director, Catherine Dunbar Windsor, she asked us to join with their initiative across Atlantic Canada and proclaim the month of September 2022 to be FASD Awareness Month for all cities, towns, and municipalities in New Brunswick. So attached is a brief letter from their executive director and a proclamation should we decide to do so. If we decide to do so, to proclaim September as to be FASD Awareness Month, they would love a photo of the proclamation being signed by the authority or the signed proclamation itself. We plan on sharing photos of all towns and cities that issue proclamations on our social media and on our forthcoming Putting FASD on the Map release. She hopes that we will work together to spread awareness of FASD and improve the lives of those in the community. She thanks us, and she looks forward to hearing from us. It's very important. I taught school and dealt with a lot of children who were fetal alcohol syndrome children. And it is something that lasts a lifetime, but it's nice to see that people have gone on to it and are now putting forth a month that will be respected for these people. And I think it needs to be done. So the motion, then, is that the Town of St. Andrews proclaim September 2022 as Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorder Awareness Month to support the FASDNL Multi-Year Atlantic Canada Awareness Campaign. And I so move this, Your Honor, and I know that you're not camera shy.
Thank you. A secondar for that motion, Councillor Blanchard. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye. Perfect, I will read the proclamation. This is the Town of St. Andrews Proclamation for Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorder Awareness for the month of September of 2022. Whereas fetal alcohol spectrum disorder, otherwise known as FASD, is a diagnostic term used to describe impacts on the brain and body of individuals parentally exposed to alcohol. FASD is a lifelong disability. Individuals with FASD will experience some degree of challenges in their daily living and need support with motor skills, physical health, learning, memory, attention, communication, emotional regulation, and social skills to reach their full potential. Each individual with FASD is unique and has areas of both strengths and challenges. And whereas FASDNL is a pan-provincial organization that educates, provides support and resources, and raises awareness about FASD in Newfoundland and Labrador and Atlantic Canada, and whereas FASDNL is leading a three-year FASD prevention awareness, training, and collaborative action project in four Atlantic provinces, and whereas FASD Awareness Month is devoted to raising awareness of fetal alcohol spectrum disorder to improve the prevention of FASD diagnosis and supporting for individuals with FASD and broad public awareness helps to put FASD on the map. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town of St. Andrews hereby proclaim September 2022 as FASD Awareness Month. And now therefore, I Brad Henderson, Mayor of the Town of St. Andrews, support the proclamation of FASD Awareness Month for the Town of St. Andrews. And I will be signing this at Town Hall tomorrow, and we'll make sure to get a photo of it to get it off to their social media. And the witness, I have set my hand and caused the seal of mayorality of the Town of St. Andrews to be affixed here, too. So that one's completed. The next one, Deputy Mayor.
Before we go on, though, there is one more thing that they're asking for, and it's, if, do you have any experiences living or working with FASD in Atlantic Canada? Are you interested in participating in a survey, an interview, or a focus group? So you can, there's a link, and I think this will be put up on our website. So you'll be able to click on the link and take the survey or participate. If you have any interest of doing this, I know I've run into a lot of people that say, well, I'd like to volunteer for something. This would be a good volunteer organization that you could get wrapped up with. Thank you, Your Worship, and I'll continue on. So, the second one is FA220910, and it's New Brunswick Municipal Finance Corporation Projects. Counsel, and the background is this. Counsel approves borrowing from the Municipal Capital Borrowers Board for various projects in 2021. Now that those projects are complete, we are able to make an application to the Municipal Finance Corporation to get the funds released. The project being finances are as follows. Purchase water meters for $38,000. Replace aerator at Lagoon for $15,000. Portable generator for the lift station of $12,000. Cornelia upgrade, $300,000. The remaining projects for 2022 will have debentures taken in the spring of 2023. So the motion is this. Be it resolved that the Treasurer or Assistant Treasurer and Mayor or Deputy Mayor be authorized to issue and sell to the New Brunswick Municipal Finance Corporation a municipality of the Town of St. Andrews debenture in the principal sum of $365,000 on such terms and conditions as are recommended by New Brunswick's Municipal Financial Finance Corporation. And be it resolved that the municipality of the Town of St. Andrews agrees to issue post-dated checks payable to the New Brunswick Municipal Finance Corporation as and when requested in payment of principal and interest charges on the debentures. Deventures, sorry. So, there's a chart there that has ministerial order number and its utility, and it's 21-0019. And then the date of the ministerial one order is March 8, 2021. Date of council's resolution authorizing application to the MCBB is February 1, 2021. Purpose by function was environmental health services. Amount in dollars was $65,000, and the term is 10 years. The second one is 22-0008, and date of the council's resolution authorizing application to the MCBB was January 10, 2022. And purpose by function was environmental health services. Amount in dollars was $300,000, and the term is for 25 years. And I so move this, Your Worship.
Thank you. Could I have a secondar for that motion? Councillor Blanchard. And we'll open this one up for discussion. A lot of it was obviously discussed during budget time, as we know, and it's just the, I guess you could say, the paperwork around it. Anyone, though? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor of approving this motion, please signify by saying aye. That's everybody that has been carried. Thank you very much for your reading tonight, Deputy Mayor Akagi, and getting your message across. I can see you're very passionate about the proclamation for this evening, which is great to see. We'll skip over Public Works, Public Safety, and Business Tourism Heritage and Culture this evening, so late night for three of our councillors. And we're going to go and welcome back Councillor Goumichel for Recreation and Community Services. And we'll do the first one, but not to forget that we have this attachment that was in your package that we're going to discuss right after this one. So, over to you, Councillor Goumichel. 71. Well, the, yes.
71.
Sorry. You know what? There's no physical motion for this one, so I can take the lead on this one, then. I'm sorry about that, Councillor Goumichel. So this one is a discussion regarding the outdoor exercise park. Counsel, you're obviously up to date, but just as a summary, a location was selected. We had a resident that basically presented to council. We had a presentation and shared some reasons why they and some neighbors that signed a petition did not want that in that particular area. So in order to bring that particular motion back, it would require a majority of council because a decision was made. So over to you, counsel. Is there, first of all, what I'm going to do is try to get consensus on if you want to revisit the location or not, but I wanted to see if there was any questions or any comments before I do that. Anyone at this time? Deputy Mayor Akagi.
Just one question. I guess I didn't turn my microphone off either, sorry. Friends of Langmead Park were against Langmead Park, and that was not mentioned in our report. I just wondered if I made that up, or I came out of nowhere, or it's something that I remember. We discussed that when Sorty was here, that they were totally against having it in Langmead Park.
Yep, that is correct. That was one of the options. It wasn't the number one option, but some people that watched the original presentation did voice some opposition for that particular location, for sure. Any other member of council, any questions? All right, Councillor Blanchard.
Just one more on the process. I think you mentioned the majority of council is required in order to revisit this.
Correct.
I was of the understanding it required unanimous consent of council as opposed to majority.
We dug into it in the past. It was unanimous, but with our new procedural bylaw, it's just majority, meaning that one councillor on their own couldn't particularly block the will of the general council. So, majority, that's a good question. There was two follow-ups from our previous meeting that we did not share since then, I guess, in a public setting. And one was in regards to consultation with the Besko Tumogati. So I reached out to the chief's office. I can confirm that there is no opposition to this. However, if there's future phases of any projects related to this, i.e. a bathroom or something like that, they would like to be consulted because that might be different as it's a permanent structure that can't be moved, right? So that was the feedback I got from that office. Was there, as well, the other concern, Mr. Naupur, Mr. Spear, was environmental, and you guys double-checked on that, so I'll pass it over to one of you.
Yeah, Worship, we followed up, and the department said that there had been other projects within the zone. In fact, our trail is on the opposite side of that that we're working on that's within an environmentally sensitive area, and we were approved for that. So we'd have to go through the process, but they didn't see any issues with the project as presented.
Okay. So it sounds like for Mr. Spear, if it was to stand, then they would be reaching out to make sure that it was, in fact, no issue on the environmental side. So, counsel, those are the two that I took as the main two takeaways that I got from you from that particular meeting for follow-up, unless there's anything else that any other member has. Okay, so I am going to try to get some consensus, then. How many people would like to revisit the location? And if we do, what will happen is we'll move it forward to the next regular meeting for a motion, would be my assumption, so we could actually put a location in there or a motion to defeat or support. How many would like to revisit this particular motion? Okay, how many are opposed to revisiting this particular motion? Okay, so that's everybody. So the location as it stands is the location that is selected by council. The second part is in regards to, was it design? Mr. Spear?
Yes, Your Worship. So, counsel, I sent folks an email late today. I didn't include the doctor back. Just a question on- I have a question on repositioning the road. And so, as you know, we fixed up the parking lot and paved it this year near the mouth of the trail. But one of the struggles is that the exit road for the park still goes through there. And so, in review of the plan, what staff have come up with is that we take the exit that currently goes by the parking lot and move it on the other side of the statue, sorry, the granite monument. And so it's more of a V shape in that wide arc. Really, two things. Once that's done, staff would fill in what's the gravel road there right now and re-sod it, so it'd open up potentially more green space out there. It'd also slow down traffic a little bit because that road, people get in there right now- now and can take a pretty good run because it's coming right off Prince of Wales you go and then it's, it's fairly straight. So it would help control that. There'd be no trees, we were, had to measure it out, there'd be no trees lost or anything. And where it'd be coming out from, it'd slow it down a little bit. So it'd be moving it closer to like the entrance of the, well, of the Kiwanis campground, but it's still on the side, so about halfway down the park more or less.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Spear. So the benefit of that would be it would make that gravel road kind of pass the, I guess you could say the, the park area where you park on the gravel. It would make it half the distance, therefore increasing the amount of green space.
Absolutely, which would allow for more picnic tables and stuff and a nice weekend or a nice summer day. That park is one of the most used spaces in the town and so it'll just give us some more, gives us an opportunity.
In my understanding via council direction, it's something that you would be doing this year because there would be an opportunity within the budget, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So, you know, the minimal groundwork that's required, we'd have the material, most of the materials already on site and so they could try to get it put up this year so that it'd have a time to settle over the winter and be ready to be driven on next spring. So once it's closed down or near no use this year, we would start doing that with current materials and get that completed.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Spear on that? We'll go with Deputy Mayor Akagi first.
Thank you, your worship. Will the gate be up? Like, you know, you've put a gate up so that they don't drive on in the wintertime. Will that gate be there or will it be back where it was or just curious?
So we'd move the gate, I guess essentially. We'd put some type of blockade by the parking lot so people aren't trying to go through the old exit, whether it's a fence or, or stones.
Bute's turn.
Now, and then we'd move the other gate over to where the new road is primarily because in the, in the early spring, you'll sync up to your hubs in there and some people will go use that as a recreational for motor vehicles in the wrong time of season. So it's why it's important we gated up from motor vehicles during the soft seasons of the winter.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Hurdle?
Thank you, worship. Just a suggestion, if at all possible, I see that on the design here, there are two, two-way roads to get into the parking area in there. I possibly suggest maybe having two one-way roads with an entrance and an exit or just one two-way road to get in and out of there, therefore making more green space available and less vehicular traffic and just a nicer look overall, just a suggestion.
No, thank you. It's a good, good suggestion, thank you.
Good suggestion. And the other thing I'll say, if you do decide council to support this, I'd still, even though it's just adjusting kind of the way the road goes, I'd, I'd still like to consult with the Pesco Tomogati just to make sure that, that they're aware of the change and have it consulted as well if, if you do decide to go that route. So any other questions? Otherwise, I'll try to get some consensus. Counselor Neal?
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, just a couple of quick questions, I guess. Has any consideration been given to just where that location is coming out now, like where it's, it's basically across the street from what I think is the, is that the Dragonfly Center? Like, so it's essentially creating an intersection there? And my other question again was just regarding the sightlines possibly coming out through those mature trees, like?
Yeah, we, so if you envision it, the trees are actually backed quite a way, so you've got to rise up a little bit of a knoll, so they get to raise up the ditch a bit. So the sightlines are a problem. I guess we'll double-check on the Dragonfly location. It's a, it's a good question. The Dragonfly Center has, you know, just very certain times of the year and certain times of the days of that year that there's a lot of traffic, so I'm less concerned that there'd be an issue. It's concerning to make sure it isn't, but it's just that it's, I don't think they'll be competing at the same time of day for the use of that space.
Yeah. Does move it away from the trail a little bit too, which is nicer. And the lights wouldn't be pointing at the residential area as well if it was someone, it's usually locked, but if someone was driving at dark, it would stop it from shining. Okay, any other questions? Okay, I'll look for some consensus. I guess it would be, we'll call it photo two, I guess in our diagram is, is the new. How many people are in favor of, of making that change?
I'm including the one way.
With the one-way recommendation, yeah, staff will look into that, but I think they, they supported that. So with the one-way, yeah, with the one-way, photo two.
Sorry, council.
Yeah, you absolutely, absolutely can, I can come back to consensus.
Well, I just wanted to add in there, not just the, the two one-way roads, but also this might respond to Counselor Neal's suggestion is if we just had one two-way entrance and exit, that would, coming in closer to the end of the point as opposed to having the two roads in and out. I'm not sure if you've already taken a look at that and it's unfeasible, but that might alleviate the, you know, possibly having to remove a tree and having that intersection there as well if we just had one in and out of the park. But just again, suggestion, wanted to make sure that was caught there too.
I guess on that suggestion, is there advantage to having a roundabout?
Oh, look, there's not a, not a good turning lane there, if you will. We'll flatten out some of the grassy area, but there is a bit of a ups and downs there. But I'll talk to staff and see what they think, make sure there's lots of room. And, yeah, it's, it's a good suggestion. I'll talk to Public Works and their operations manager to see if there's any concerns about that and report back.
Good suggestion. All right, so what's best for you, Mr. Spear, in light of that? Would you like to just follow back up with us? And it sounds like council's entered, it's not enough hands that council's entertaining a change, maybe hard to know what that looks like and then we'll, we'll go ahead. I, I think this, probably for budget implications, it's probably the same, but over to you.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, there's only one thing, I guess Terry happens to be watching the show and texting me a little bit going on. So he's saying that it's good to keep the, the two-way because there's sometimes events in there, like we've had car shows and different things. People go and do, in the past, we had the grand march and stuff, so it's not a bad idea to at least have the capability to keep everything going.
It's true. It did allow for a flow for an event that ever did need it. It's a valid point. Thank, thankfully Terry is watching.
The only thing is like there is, the chief has done some ceremonies down there, especially on Canada Day, so I, I'm glad that you're going to talk to him and he will guide you as to the area that they use quite often for ceremonies. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I guess, it, it sounds like the roundabout one-way is the way based on Mr. Akin's feedback, so that'll be the one that I'm trying to get consensus. How many support that? That's everybody, so you got some consensus there in direction. Does that work for you, Mr. Spear?
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah. Just, if I could just a quick-
Roundabout one-way. Can you explain it a little more? I'm getting confused.
Yeah, sorry. It's technically not question period, it's a council debate, but a roundabout is when you kind of go in one driveway and go out the other. So right now, people can come and go both ways out of both entrances. It's just to have a flow of traffic so that way you wouldn't have to make it as wide. So that way it wouldn't take up as much lawn if you were to add that new kind of road in.
I was entering a circle, that's why.
Yeah, I know, perfect understand. Okay, so that, oh, Counselor Blanchard?
Yeah, just, if I could just quickly, just to go back to our previous decision on, on to not revisit the location of the, the outdoor exercise park, I just wanted to provide some rationale for my decision because I do appreciate the fact that there are a number of citizens, you know, in, in that neighborhood who have shown up and who have, who have provided some feedback to council. Just, I know you did touch on a few of my specific concerns with regards to communicating with the Pesco Tomo- Pesco Tomogati. It's not going to come out right now. I don't know why. I can do it. I've done it many times before. Pesco Tomogati people. And I appreciate the feedback there and also the feedback from the Provincial Environment Department. What you didn't touch on though, and we as council have been provided with some additional documentation, the outdoor exercise park really comprises about 1% of the total green space area. And I think that's an important feature. And, and also I, I want to mention too, because we did talk about communication, we did receive, again, from town staff and I appreciate the information, records that date back, I think it was January 28th of, of 2021, that's when this process started. So just to be clear, this, this didn't happen overnight, so I wanted to make those points. And also, just when we're talking about the green space and the utilization of the green space, obviously I think that's very important. I feel personally this will actually enhance the utilization of that, of that green space. I don't think it detracts from, I think it actually enhances people's ability to enjoy that green space. So that's where I'm coming from, but I just wanted to make that known to, 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 to the community and to the folks who've taken the time to present to council. So thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Blanchard, for those comments. Okay, so we'll move on to this one and now it's the one that we added in. So I guess Counselor Goom Michelle, you don't have to, to read a motion this evening, but it's in regards, before we had a conversation and there was no decision made, it was just a grant opportunity to put a sidewalk around basically Prince of Wales from King Street to the, to the point, essentially. We haven't heard, heard any indication back on that particular funding source yet, but staff has been thinking, one of the big concerns of a sidewalk was to go in there is that there is a number of trees that go along Prince of Wales Street and if a sidewalk was to go down one side, you would be losing a lot of trees on one side as a result. And I know that those trees are approaching unfortunately the end of their life cycle. But with that being said, to, to cut them all, I think there was a bit of a, there'd be a, definitely a shock and awe process with it and, and ending the life cycle, even though it's late in it, early, I, I don't think would be supported by necessarily everyone in this community. So staff has been looking at a number of different options and the one that they brought back before us this evening was basically kind of, I call it like the bar road, you know, how it was widened and how there's, there's room on the side to walk. What they're actually proposing in this for our consideration is just to widen it a little bit and then you could actually have that little walking lane or biking lane on the side. It wouldn't be an official sidewalk and it would be significantly cheaper than, than doing the sidewalk option. So I guess staff put this before us tonight because as we know through municipal reform is, there's still no indication that we're going to be very active when it comes to setting our own budget. And that's, again, I could go on a side rant on that like I have in the past, that elected officials in our community, elected by their community are, are kind of removed from the process and an appointed individual from the provincial government essentially is setting the budget for this community. That, that's a big shame. So staff's doing their best job to, on big projects to get some, some insight from us and I can appreciate that. So I guess over to council, if, again, it comes down to, to money, I, I will say this on, on this is, I don't, as much as I'd like to see this, I don't call this an urgent project right now by any means. We've got wharf costs that are through the roof. We haven't really figured out what we're doing with that. So as much as I appreciate them weighing in, if you look at the actual cost of this, I don't know if it's on this, yeah, $650,000 and we have no government funding, I don't see why we would budget for this at this particular time. But I didn't want to skew your response and neither did, of course, staff, but if anyone feels contrary, I don't. The other question I asked staff when I saw this is, we do have a grant that is for trails, could that potentially be leveraged? It doesn't mean that we will do it, but I asked if it could be leveraged and we would have to go back to the funding source, but to say that, that's, couldn't happen, that's not necessarily correct either. Is there anything I'm missing on this, Mr. Spear or Mr. Naupra?
I think one thing, worship, just to continue on is this wouldn't necessarily have to be done in one year. We might do a block at a time, so it could be done over four or five years to, so it's not a shock to the borrowing capacity of the town of St. Andrews. To give you an indication, it's actually, we already widened it where the new paving was in with the work on Prince of Wales up by the Dragonfly Center. So basically we'd be continuing that type of width down the remainder of the road is what we're proposing. We'd put in a white line to give us that 1.3 to 1.5 meter lane that, you know, delineated from, from traffic. Is it as good as a sidewalk with curbs? No, but I think for a reason spoken, being financial and the saving of the trees, which are considered a heritage portion of St. Andrews, it's probably the best and, and once you get outside the summer season, probably from mid-June to mid-September, the traffic is much more manageable down there. It's just during July and August when walkers would probably run into vehicles crossing more as opposed to just one vehicle at a time going down. So we think by widening it, giving the lane, it'll provide sufficient room for two vehicles to pass plus a walker to be, or a bicyclist to be able to continue.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Spear. So I guess for me to get consensus, is there any particular consensus you're looking for, for, are you looking for an amount or, or just, yeah, oh, absolutely.
This is not going to be paved.
This is not going to be paved, correct? It's going to be kind of like that plus or minus that we have going the rest of the way around the point, which is really quite solid?
No, no.
Or is this going to be paved?
It's going to be paved, basically widening the shoulders.
Because we've, you know, like, it's so expensive to do the paving, we've put a lot of projects on hold because of that paving. Why wouldn't we in the first stage do it as that plus or minus and then pave when the, the price of the paving comes down? Just a question. Thank you.
Well, I guess a couple of things. Number one is that you're going to, you know, for accessibility reasons, it's better, you know, for people that have mobility issues, which the trail and stuff is trying to address, paving it and stuff. But number two, to be honest, it's a long stretch and if we put that, the, the bluestone on it, it'll be ripped up every winter because that stuff will be plowed, so it'll be available all year long. And so if it's paved, it won't require less maintenance year over year. It's just there's more upfront cost, but then it'll be 35, 40 years before you have to address it again.
So for, I guess back to consensus, are you, are you looking to see if council wants to incorporate it potentially in the budget for a block, for, you know, a block or two blocks? Is that what you're looking for from council at this time?
I guess if you support the concept, your worship, then we can start to put it into budget, you know, on, on a phased-in approach. We know that there was discussion about the sidewalk that had come through the, the grants. And so if council isn't interested in this, part of it too is we got to start, next spring we could start painting some of it because like I said, there's already two blocks that have been done and, and that would allow us to, to start to get that going. But if council wants to look at another alternative or leave it as is, then we'll take that into future design and, and consideration.
Counselor Hurdle?
Thank you, worship. So I guess my two cents on this project would be that it, it seems like it's a very specific thing that we're looking to possibly do. And I know people are probably going to sigh when they hear me say this, but there's been some suggestion from the community too, that a, that a transportation study be done at some point. And I'm wondering if we should be looking possibly at a larger plan to figure out in terms of traffic flow and pedestrian flow and then once we have that plan, we can identify stages of that plan to work through and this could be one of those stages, but it just seems like, I don't want to go piecemeal at it, if some more significant changes are going to be coming down the pipe in the next, you know, five, 10 years, maybe it could be, you know, phase one or phase two of, of a larger plan.
I guess my answer to, oh, sorry, Counselor Heenan has hand up, it's okay for me to respond.
No, go ahead if you want to respond to that first.
Yeah. From staff's perspective and I think many of the counselors, that's probably the busiest walking trail in all of St. Andrews, to be honest. And so from a safety perspective, it's good to go. It's really kind of a continuation of what we've got already. So there's a lot of people that'll cross the Van Horn, go through Katie's Cove and continue down. There's also a lot of people that will just turn down Prince of Wales and do the shorter route and especially people from the campground. So, you know, I, I'm happy to say that it's, it's not kind of a piecemeal of a different project. It's kind of continuing or joining up different pieces of the thing here. The other thing is too, it's important to realize is that during the winter months, right now, we don't plow the Van Horn Trail, any of it. And so by doing this, it'd give walkers an opportunity, they'd have a safer walk, they'd go down water, walk around the point and then come down Prince of Wales with a wider, clearer path.
Perfect. Counselor Heenan?
Yes, your worship and council. First off, I support this because the trees are saved. I've always worried about a safety issue around that area. We're seeing a larger amount of electric bikes, et cetera, that need somewhere to get on and, and there's really nowhere to go. I mean, it, it really is a safety issue because it's, I just feel that it's a, it's a safety, it's kind of a waiting for something to happen. So this to me, if we decide, if we decide, it's a perfect thing because we save the trees, we get rid of the safety issue and it alleviates some of the squashing, shall I say, of the whole area. Thank you, worship.
Thank you, Counselor Heenan. Counselor Blanchard?
Yeah, thank you, worship. I, I just, I would agree with Counselor Heenan on this one. I, I do feel it, it, it most definitely is a safety issue. I think we've already identified, town staff has identified thus, over the last little while, we've heard that that is one of the highest traffic areas for, for walking and for cycling and just traffic in general in, in town. I, I actually feel it is a priority. I, I should be a priority for us. I know we talked about it through the grant, possibly putting in the sidewalk there, there was a possibility. But certainly the, the idea of losing some of those trees, even though we, we did have the information that many are actually close to the end of their life cycle and would probably be, over the next little while would start to come down anyways by themselves or, 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 you know, would have to come down through, through the town. But I do like the idea of, of just the separate, even, even just delineated by the line, that But I do like the idea of just the separate, even just delineated by the line, that one and a half meter separation, it does provide some, a little bit of safety for walkers and cyclists. And I do think it's an important, an important walking trail, especially like you said, especially in the wintertime as well, where the Van Horn Trail isn't cleared. It does provide a path. And like you said, I think it ties in projects. I don't necessarily feel it's piecemeal. I think it does tie in sort of the loop and sort of the trail system we've been talking about. So I'm definitely in support of getting us moving on this, the sooner the better as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
All right, counsel. So I guess my question to that is, is this something that you would like the town staff to go back in regards to the grant that we already have and see if we can leverage some of those funds? Or is this something that you just want to put a percentage of money and hope that we can actually reach out to other levels of government to maybe get some new funding? The only thing I, I'm not a huge fan on is right now with all the other costs that we have that we've committed to is saying that we're going to spend a significant amount of money on this. And the other thing that I'm really hesitant on is I think that we're long overdue to do another priority session to kind of list our priorities because we, there's a lot of things we want to do. And I'm also well aware that we're going to have representatives from Bayside and Shamcook joining us in the future too. So I'd really like for them to weigh in on that as well, just to make sure that we're all one and all working in the same direction. So I guess over to you to let me know if this is something that you want, just trade it for a budget item to do a block or two. I don't think we're going to do all of them unless you guys tell me otherwise. It's a lot of money. But over to you to give me some direction and staff as well. Counsel Hurdle.
Yeah, thank you, worship. And I agree with absolutely every comment that's been said. I mean, I am a big proponent for safety and safe transportation, safe pedestrian, being able to get around that point is definitely very important. I guess my concern is, is just the budget. And we're looking at $650,000, which is an astounding amount of money. And that's just an estimate with rising costs. I mean, this is a project that could balloon really quickly. And I'm trying to think of the other projects that we've put on hold at this point because of budgetary reasons. And to think about like this, I just, I would love to see it happen. I just can't see where the funding would come from unless we do find it somewhere with other levels of government.
Mr. Spears would like to respond to that.
Your worship, there's something I guess that is worth considering too, that I just reminded of is that that road under asset management plan is supposed to be paved anyway, no matter what, whether we widen it or not, that it's getting to the end of its useful life cycle. So it's really to address that. So as opposed to like building something from the ground, we're really looking just to do an add-on to something that has to be addressed over the next four to five years. So, you know, so, you know, we say what, 600,000 to do the whole project, but whether or not you approve this, we're probably going to need to resurface the road as is to the tune of 400 to 450 anyway, or along that lines, whatever future costs are.
So the incremental cost for council would be about $200,000.
Just the extra lane.
Okay. That's good to clarify for decision making as well. Okay, council, what's your kind of pleasure? We still haven't really got direction other than, I agree, this is by far better than a sidewalk, sorry, a sidewalk would be ideal, but I think if you look at the, what it would do to that street, I don't think it's something that we'd be comfortable doing at this point based on some feedback I've got for some, some members of council. Counsel Heenan.
Yes, your worship and counsel. Just a note, could we ask staff to see if it could be included in the funding that we have for the trail? Is that an option, your worship?
I personally think that it would be something that would be good to know. In order to basically do the other phases of the trail, we have a percentage of money that we're already allocating. So to add more on that, that's a significant amount of spend on trails in one year. And we're already, let's be honest, setting record highs and kind of that investment, which is good. But does anyone see it differently? I like that suggestion. Does anyone else, anyone opposed to that suggestion, I guess is what I'll say? Counsel Gubachal?
Thank you, worship. I think most of the monies for trails that we've, that we've been granted are already allocated to different projects. And I'm also very much in favor and want to applaud staff on coming up with a creative, creative solutions to try and alleviate the issues along Prince of Wales. I think that we're going to have an accessible exercise park and it'll be linked to the school and it'll be immediately, immediately used by some people. And it'll certainly make the gym teacher much happier to be able to go down to the point with students and not have to be in the middle of the road flagging cars. So I appreciated the C A O's comments about how it does link into an overall plan. We already did a transportation plan and Prince of Wales was flagged as needing proper sidewalks. So to, I mean, we could talk ourselves out of it at any point, but here we are right at the precipice of, you know, giving staff to go ahead to do it. And I think they've come up with a creative compromise that is both cost effective and promising for the citizens of St. Andrews. So thank you, worship.
Thank you, Counsel Gubachal. All right, let's get some consensus. How many people here would like staff to check on the existing funding grant that we have to see if this is something that's possible? Could you raise your hand if you'd like staff to investigate that? Okay, how many opposed? Okay, so five to one. Mr. Spear, if you could follow up with that and let us know if that works within our existing budgeting. All right, so that wraps up that one. Some healthy conversation there to say the least. And at this point, that would close out Recreation Community Services. We're going to move into Planning and Economic Development with Counsel Heenan.
Thank you, worship. This is PED 220713. The subject is Bylaw Number 22-04, Being the Building Bylaw for the Town of St. Andrews, Third and Final Reading. The background, your worship, is with the recent changes to the Building Code Administration Act, the town of St. Andrews is required under the Province of New Brunswick to adopt a new version of the building bylaw. Provided with this report is a new version of the building bylaw number 22-04. Council still needs to complete three readings of the bylaw to pass. This bylaw will repeal the existing building bylaw of 19-03. Changes to the bylaw include enhanced definitions, more focused purpose, modifications to exemptions of excessive rebuildings, obligations of constructors, building permit postings requirements and notice of inspection, revoking or suspension of permits. First reading was Monday, July the 18th, 2022. Second reading was Tuesday, August the 2nd, 2022. Staff put a notice out for the third reading on the town website, social media and notice board to allow for the reading by title on August the 3rd, 2022. A copy of the bylaw has been on the town website and has been available for review at the town hall. The action and motion is that council grants leave for the third and final reading to bylaw number 22-04, being the building bylaw for the town of St. Andrews, and I so move this, your worship.
Thank you. A seconder? Counsel Blanchard, discussion on this motion? Okay, all in favor? Oh, go ahead.
There's something we discovered a little weekend that we might want to amend to. On section 8.2. Sorry, everyone. So there might be an amendment to it that we should probably put in immediately, that under section 8.2, which is on page 84 of your document, it says, an inspection shall be made within two days of the receipt of the notice of readiness for inspection. We better put in within two business days.
Okay.
Because it's, you know, hypothetically, somebody could ask for it on Friday and then on Monday say, well, they didn't come, we're good to go. So we thought we just add clarity for that.
Okay. Is that the only change?
For now. There'll probably be amendments from the province later, but that one from the day to day is probably an important one to put in immediately.
Well, if there is any changes, it will require three readings after tonight. Any member of council like to move for that amendment to add the word business on 8.2? I've got Counsel Hurdle and seconded by Deputy Mayor Akaji. Any discussions on that amendment? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Perfect. And I did have a mover and a seconder on the original motion. Do I need another mover or a seconder? Does that still stand even though we've amended it?
Your worship, if you go as amended, if the mover and seconder are fine as amended, then?
Or the mover, original mover and seconder, which I forget already.
Heenan and Blanchard.
Are you guys fine with that amendment then, obviously? Because you voted in favor of it. Okay. So at this point, I can call the question then to go to third reading. So all in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is everybody. And the good news is we advertised this well in advance, so I do not have to read the entire bylaw. I can get by by reading it by title. Here we go for bylaw number 22-04, being the building bylaw for the town of St. Andrews. Under one, it is definitions. Two is purpose and scope. Three is exemptions. Four is notice of commencing construction. Five is posting on the premises. Six is obligations of the, of constructor. Seven is stages of construction. Eight is notice of readiness for inspection. Nine is retention of documents. 10 is request for information. 11 is application for permits. 12 is fees. 13 is refusal to issue permit. 14 is suspension or revocation permit. 15 is terms and conditions. 16 is repeal. We read it the first time, the 18th day of July of 2022. The second time, it was read on the second day of August of 2022. And it was read the third time on the first day of school, the sixth day of September 2022. So that has been carried. All right, jumping back to the next one. And I believe it's not a motion, Counsel Heenan. And I think I'm going to defer this one over to Mr. Knopper just to provide. It's basically just a procedures update to let us know. The Planning Advisory Committee themselves determine their own procedures. This is just for communication sharing for members of council. Go ahead, Mr. Knopper.
Thank you, worship. So council PAC did review their rules of operation and procedures at the last PAC meeting in August. During some of the processes, questions came up about neighborhood polling and the processes that were in the rules and regulations that actually went above and beyond the Community Planning Act. And the PAC's goals and rules of operation are to be within the Community Planning Act structure. So section 37, which was neighborhood polling, has been switched to section 37 notices. And in the report, it gives you a bit of an outline, or it gives you the outline of what it now states. So it talks about polling in regards to variances and not rezonings. Rezonings are a council process, not a PAC process. PAC deals with variances. So that's really the main differentiation within the polling processes.
Thank you, Mr. Knopper. Any questions on that communication? Okay, thank you. We'll go to the next one, which is the discussion on amendment MP 20-0201 is to the Town of St. Andrews Secondary Municipal Plan, MP 20-02 for PID 01320035 and 15054893, which is 256 and 260 Water Street for Bridle Path International, or sorry Incorporated, which is PED 220710. All right, so council, we obviously had a presentation earlier this evening. We've got quite a bit of communication, both opposed and for this particular project. The developer has come in twice now to present it before you. There is a lot of things that need to be worked on, but I guess before we get into questions, would it make sense to pass it over to Mr. Gopin just to share, share a little bit with them on probably building scheme bylaw?
Yeah, thank you, worship. I know we've been here a while and hearing about arcane details of the Community Planning Act and things they authorize are not exactly what everybody wants to hear, but I'll go pretty quickly. I think Paul's getting the presentation up here. And just a little bit of context, when PAC gave their views, they said, if you're going to do this, make sure a development scheme bylaw is in place. And that was my recommendation to them. And I believe it's in your council report as well. And I know that I've spoken to this council about development scheme bylaws before, more in the context of trying to create some housing plans. This is, this is kind of a different use of it. They're very wide ranging. I might even talk about it on Thursday night with the Heritage Scheme bylaw, but tonight it's really just how it relates to the project at 256, 260 Water Street. And if council is basically okay with the kind of proposed design so far, how this is the tool that would allow council to really have a lot of control over that final development, deal with a lot of the concerns that have been raised. So I'll jump into the presentation now and see how this goes. I have some animations in there. So yes, anyways, nobody cares what sections this comes from, but the development scheme bylaw, it's like any other bylaw of the Community Planning Act. It's authorized by the Community Planning Act. And the Community Planning Act says it shall, which means it has to, consist of written statements, maps, drawings and other descriptive matter to illustrate the scheme. So your site plans, I'll give you some examples. It has to specify a geographic area, so it's, could be for a PID, a collection of PIDs, a historic business district, for example, but in this case, we're really just talking about a few PIDs. It must set out the details of development and/or redevelopment. And it describes the manner of implementation, which can get into elements that would normally be contained within a development agreement. And those are pretty broad and they're used very broadly, but those are the things it has to do. It can also, and I would recommend if you're going in this direction, these are also things that are, should, allocate areas of land for particular uses. So not just where things are going, but what parts of a building can be used for different things. And I know that's a bit of a discussion with this project. Like any other bylaw under the Community Planning Act, this one's treated as a, as a pretty long process and it's like a municipal plan amendment. So it goes through public presentation, public hearing, views of PAC and the three readings. So there's a lot more opportunity for public, input, public consultation, two more official opportunities that come out of this kind of bylaw. And they have to have a certain amount of space between them. So it's a good way to kind of extend the process. And I know there's been a little bit of feedback, oh, this is, this is moving too quickly. And if you do go down this road, which I would encourage if you're going to go ahead with the amendment to the secondary municipal plan, this will really give a lot of time for that input. In the future, not probably super relevant for this scenario, but as just we're saying, if there was a need for exemptions or variances in the future under this development scheme bylaw, it's an interesting process. The developer can enter into an agreement with council at that point for terms and conditions. So it would actually be a resolution of council, not the typical amendment process. This is, I think, a little bit more important, sort of why is this, what are the benefits of this? This is the way that council can set terms and conditions. There really isn't an opportunity to do that with just the secondary municipal plan amendment, and it's very important in, for this project if it's going to proceed. As I said, it extends the public consultation process. And again, with a project of this scale and, you know, in the area it's going, it's a very prominent location. The developer has been very open to public feedback. He's, you know, he was here, he's changed his designs. And as he stated, he's willing to keep going with that and that could be included in this process. I already mentioned the additional formal presentation and hearing. One of the other benefits is that I think there are some questions about the zone that the property is in right now, the central commercial zone. It does allow for secondary residential uses. This would be more extreme than any other secondary residential uses in the historic business district. It is common to have, you know, multiple stories of residential above a main commercial use, but having, I believe, 36 units as opposed to, you know, three to five, that's certainly more of a gray area and the development scheme bylaw would clarify that because it can deal with the uses. And right now, the central commercial zone would require that there also be commercial uses on the Princess Royal side. And that is something I think from the feedback from residents on Princess Royal, it should be more of a residential scaling down to meet that and not necessarily having the commercial traffic on that side. And I think the intent of the zoning bylaw was always more about Water Street anyways. So again, the development scheme bylaw would make that a non-issue. It could make that very clear. And so I'm just going to bring up, oh, perfect, we're on track here, paying attention, a bylaw that's still in effect in the town of St. Andrews from 1988. And this is a development scheme bylaw from then. And this is, shows you what those details of development are, the things that at the time were thought to be important for this particular development. And it's not a bad template, even though it's quite old at this point. Reading through it, I think there's a lot of things that could be used again. And, because everybody's probably wondering what this is if we go to the next thing here. You can see that it was Langmaid Park, the townhouses and the apartment building, the student housing there. So that was in 1988, a need that the town had to see those types of uses developed. They had a specific goal for how they were going to be developed and they set this bylaw, they put out RFPs, and that's how that parcel of land in the town got developed. So it has precedent in St. Andrews. It would be a different context again, but I just wanted to use this as an example to say, this is something that's been done. I think people would say it worked very well. That's a good development. And the template that was used at that time dealt with a lot of the things that I think could be dealt with, with this development. So I'll leave it there. I can answer more questions about it, but the basic... I can answer more questions about it, but the basic summary is if council wants to move ahead with allowing this project, the development scheme bylaw is really the best way to move forward. It gives you all the public consultation. It gives you a lot of control. You can get into details of design and all that. And without a development scheme bylaw, if you do go with that amendment, there really aren't any of those guardrails. So I'll leave it there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gopin. I'll let Deputy Mayor Akadji just ask questions. I will not drink two glasses of water before a council meeting again. I'll be right back in a moment. So Deputy Mayor Akadji, lead question period, please.
Thank you, your worship. Counsel, do you have any questions you have for Mr. Gopin at this point in time? Okay, just because the mayor left, you guys don't have to go silent. All right. Oh, Counselor Blanchard, sorry.
Not so much a question, but just to say thank you for that option moving forward. I think I like the way you sort of phrase that. It does provide council with some guardrails to put in place, and I hope that provides some comfort, I guess, to the residents. Again, there's been, there's been sort of a mixed support, some for, some against, obviously, for this particular development. And I like that, I like that idea moving forward. It does give, again, option for further consultation with the public and it allows council a bit more, the ability to put, like I said, put the guardrails in place to sort of dictate where and how this, if this was to go forward, what it would look like. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Counselor Blanchard. Any other counselor? Mr. Spear?
And just to reiterate, Xander, I guess, that through this bylaw, council can almost put up any type of guardrail at this point, right? Whatever's suitable to the developer, again, because it's, you know, for them, but they can set, you know, kind of the sky's the limit in what they want for terms and conditions.
Yep. If, yep, I mean, if traffic studies were considered necessary, that could be a condition that was put into the development scheme bylaw. Traffic study must be completed before development and, you know, must show X, you know, not exceeding whatever number of additional cars or something like that. So it can, it can deal with the aspects of, you know, if there's going to be an underground parking garage. I've already started reaching out to some colleagues in St. John to see what they do in those situations, because we don't have any underground parking garages in Charlotte County. But again, development scheme bylaw could dictate how that, what kind of studies would need to be done before that could go ahead. So I think it's a great tool for that.
Thank you, Mr. Gopin. Counselor Neal, I saw your hand up. Do you still have a question?
Yeah, I was just wondering if you could clarify us, with regards to the height amendment, what the current height allowance is within the secondary municipal plan?
So it's, there's kind of two. There's, there's what is on the block. There's, you have some options. And I'll talk about this more on Thursday night when we have a more general discussion about heritage bylaws, the historic business district. This might not be the best way to regulate height, but it is regulated in this way. So it either has to be exactly the same height as another building on the block, another main building on the block, exactly the same height as the average of the main buildings on the block, or within a 10%, give or take, of the average of the buildings on the block. And then there's a ultimate ceiling of, I believe it's 40 feet, which is actually a little bit shorter than the Kennedyan is, but that was kind of seen as the ceiling. And I think in this case, the average on the block is around, I did do all this research at one point. It's definitely under the proposed height. I think it's, I want to say around eight meters, or it might be 9.8.
Just in a previous presentation, I'm pretty sure.
And counsel, he did a depth analysis that we didn't provide in this package, but certainly if we're going to move forward with this, that report will be reprovided in the future so you can just kind of get an idea of the overall sense.
Yeah, it's going to, the average on the block is around seven to eight, and the main part of the building is 9.8 meters, and then the podium, the fourth floor, is 12.2 meters.
And, Mr. Gopin, if there's a development scheme bylaw, do you still have a development agreement in addition to that, or is it just built tailored exactly to what that is? You know what I mean? Is it like a double?
It's, ideally, you would set everything in the development scheme bylaw. And then I think the best way to actually enter into an agreement would be to have a condition that the developer has to come to you for an agreement on. So there's an aspect of it that just requires further agreement for development. So you can kind of build it in.
So is it safe to say that if we look at that combined letter for residents in the area, there was a number of questions that was, I'm not sure if you had a chance to look at it yet today or not, but a development scheme bylaw would be probably the best tool to look after some of those concerns that are contained? Not all of them, obviously, but within the ones that council deems are, I guess you could say, worth highlighting, right?
I think it is the tool. Like, there really isn't, unless you just don't go ahead with the development. To go ahead, there really isn't another option, as far as I know of.
So just for timing, if council was to do this, it would make sense to implement the development scheme bylaw prior to going through third reading of backing it out of the secondary municipal plan, so that way?
Exactly.
Okay. Sorry if you asked that while I was, last time again. It's easier on Zoom when you're in that situation. Okay, is there any questions? Is there anyone, like, to me, that just would make sense to go that course? It reopens public engagement. It gives us tools and mechanisms to specifically say what, what we would like to see happen based on feedback from the public as well. I think it's just an extra, and again, it kind of takes us, I hate to go say it back to square one, but I think in this case, it's not a bad thing. Does anyone see it contrary to that? Because I think that that's something that, personally, I think it's something that makes sense. Anyone else have any other thoughts on that? Counselor Hurdle?
Thank you, your worship. Just for clarity, so we would propose the development scheme bylaw, go through the three readings for the development scheme bylaw, put that into place, then go back to ground, ground floor for the development itself?
Well, you wouldn't have to go back to ground floor. I think you have it at second reading right now, so as long as you got there in time. Because there isn't really anything, that's, that's just exempting it from the secondary municipal plan. It's not saying it's going to be this or that. It just, so it doesn't have to be this. And then you're adding the development scheme bylaw that says, but it has to be this.
Another question that I had is, if a heritage bylaw is implemented in the town of St. Andrews, could a development scheme bylaw just come in and overrule that? Like?
I don't think so, because they're coming from different acts. So a heritage bylaw is under the Heritage Conservation Act.
Okay, that makes sense.
And I know, like, for example, something under the Building Code Administration Act, like, a building code will override a zoning bylaw if there's ever that hierarchy comes into play.
Okay. Any other questions? I do have a disparate conversation. In order to continue this process and look at bringing in a development scheme bylaw, I think it's important that council weighs in on, are you comfortable with the height? Because if you're not comfortable with the height, there's no point going down this road, right? Any further, it's taking up time from staff, and obviously, we've got public that's engaging. So the question is, the developer said that it is only feasible if it's four stories. But removing that from it, it was in a secondary municipal plan, and this doesn't fit it. And to just remove it out of the secondary municipal plan, which is a governing document to how basically heritage should be protected, it's what we have right now. I know it's not a heritage bylaw, but you kind of see kind of where I'm going with this is, is, are you okay with the height? Because it is, like I said, it's outside of the secondary municipal plan. Counselor Hurdle?
One question, even taking a step back further from that. Mr. Gopin, hopefully, I know your talk, so I don't want to, I don't just surprise you with a question. There's obviously the height variance is in front of us, but I've heard from several members of the community through letters and otherwise, also about massing. And I know that it's not in front of us as a variance, so we're taking massing for granted. But I'm wondering if you can kind of talk to that for a second, why that's not in front of us today?
Well, actually, that's sort of what we were talking about. There was a second amendment, and I don't think it's the amendment that's being, that has made it to second reading for MP 20-02, but it was, it was a draft that I sent shortly after that. And it actually deals with that, because it exempts, it would exempt it from any proposal in the secondary municipal plan. So you might, again, the massing might be something that has to be dealt with in development scheme bylaw. I don't think the massing is going to meet the conditions of the secondary plan. So I do think, and just talking with Mr. Spear, it seems like the MP 20-02 that's at second reading is only about the height, and I think you would have to amend that. However, at the same time, you could amend it to say, so long as a development scheme bylaw is enforced, then this is amended. So it would actually allow you to go to third reading of the amending bylaw without having the development scheme bylaw in place. No development could happen until that was in place, but it would give the developer a little bit more certainty. So, long story short, you might also have to amend the secondary municipal plan amending bylaw, but there's lots of time to do that. So it is worth considering. The massing would be, the building next to it is, has quite a lot of floor area when you take it all together. So it's, it's not too far from that, but I think when you look at the average of all the buildings, probably isn't in that 10%. So I think you would have to amend that out as well. So basically, it's exempt from the secondary municipal plan entirely, but council is still ensuring it has design requirements and is, is meeting the municipal plan, what it refers to for the historic business district. It says it needs to have special bylaws that deal with it. It does not specify that it has to be a secondary municipal plan bylaw. So if you do that amendment, it can all work. You would have lots of time. I think, again, the question is still, are you comfortable with that generally what is being proposed moving forward? If not, there really isn't any reason to discuss the development scheme bylaw.
That's a better way of phrasing it than I tried.
Counsel, just for clarification, the MP 2001, or 200201 is only at first reading. You've only completed one reading out of three. So there's time, you can't amend as necessary.
Counselor Heenan?
Your worship and counsel, what I'm getting from this is the rubber has hit the road, so to speak. The developer will not develop if he can't do underground parking. This dies in the water if we don't, if we don't allow for the height. So there are two things. The developer has a problem, and council, well, not a problem, but they have two concerns. So one, the developer has a concern that if he can't get underground parking, it's a no-go. If we say we're not doing the height requirement, it's a no-go. Am I correct as a summary, your worship?
Correct, but before council, really, the one before us, really, primarily, there's a lot of other things, but it's right now, the big thing is because of the secondary municipal plan?
Right.
Is it falls outside of not just one, but three of four, or two of three?
Two, it's a massing and height.
Massing and height of that. So that's, that's why we're here. If it wasn't for that, it would probably be already underway with a development agreement, right?
Wouldn't necessarily, if it met the requirements of the secondary municipal plan, you might just need a building permanent.
So that's why I don't want to simplify, because there's a lot of other things to go. But if we're not comfortable with the height of it, we should end this process now, right? That's, yeah. If you're comfortable with the height of it, it doesn't mean that it's a done deal and everything, because there's a lot of things that need to be determined. I'll refer to those 20 questions out of that that need to be determined. But this is like the primary, the developer said if it doesn't get that height for the four stories, it's not going to go ahead. So let's not, I hate to say it, let's, let's give that a serious consideration tonight and find out if we want to go any further. So I'd love to hear your thoughts on that.
I would just like one more time. How tall was Mr. Holmes's construction that was approved? I understand there's-
That got a variance to go up to 14.4 meters.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, your worship.
Another member of council? All right, so is everybody, is it safe to say everybody is okay with the height for this to continue to proceed and look at bringing in a development scheme bylaw where other terms of the development can be discussed and determined, but some back and forth through staff? Is that safe to say, Mr. Spear?
Yes. We're just, we're kind of getting a general consensus tonight, but the truth is, we have to bring a motion one way or the other to a future meeting, because if you're not, we should defeat it just to take it off the table permanently. And so don't feel this is a done deal tonight. Everything has to be done by motion. We're explaining the process. The development scheme bylaw, you know, if you have questions between now and in a couple of weeks on our next meeting, feel free to ask staff here or to reach out to Xander to give you more ideas. But it's just, we'll try to supply you more information, but no matter what, we really have to bring it forward one way or the other, either next meeting or a month's time. If you want it a month's time, if you need more information, maybe let us know what would make it easier for you to make a decision.
Agreed on that. Either way, it would have to come forward since there's a live motion on it. So what I'm hearing is the development scheme bylaw makes sense. It restarts the process as well, but council is okay with the height of it, but there's some more conversations you want to have on other elements of it. Is that safe to say? Okay. Does that give you some consensus on what you need from this evening? Okay. Perfect. Okay, so let's jump back to the agenda. And we've gone through all of the introduction, consideration, passing of bylaws, nothing on our new business. So we are in question period from the public. But before we do that, has there been any online submitted to you, Mr. Knopper?
Your worship, if you want to go to the public, it's still trying to run here.
Okay, I'll go to the public and see if anything comes back. Open to the public, any questions on anything pertaining to the agenda this evening?
Mayor Henderson, counselors, town of St. Andrews employees. First of all, I want to thank Counselor Blanchard for his, his summary of how the outdoor exercise park got to where your planning stage is today. Obviously, we weren't sitting on the wings for the last year and a half waiting for the 13th hour to make a presentation. We made our presentation immediately after we heard about the park. But I have a question for Mayor Henderson. So it was explained by Counselor Akadji at our last meeting that Langmaid Park was considered as a site for the proposed outdoor exercise park. Could you please explain to us how the decision to shift the site of the proposed outdoor exercise park from Langmaid, based on opposition from the friends of the Langmaid Park, differs from shifting the site at the green space at Indian Point adjacent to 400 Prince of Whale Street, based on opposition of the majority of local property owners? While our polling of the immediate neighborhood was done quickly, the results speak for themselves. The vast majority of property owners living in the immediate vicinity of the green space at Indian Point are strongly opposed to the development of this green space. In fact, a neighbor asked recently why he was not invited to sign the petition. We explained to him that he was not home at the time of polling. We did our polling door to door, not on the internet. So is it council's position that we need a certain number of names on a petition for petition to be considered valid?
No, it does not require a certain number of, technically speaking, it wouldn't even require a petition. One resident could come forward and it could be a valid concern.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure, but I guess you did have another question before that one in regards to Langmaid Park. Langmaid Park wouldn't have been a decision made by myself as an individual. I know you directed it towards me. It'd be a greater decision of council, and I don't want to speak for all of council, but Langmaid Park has already a number of things in it. There's a number of different trees, there's benches, there's things like that. This space was just green space, so, and the other thing is, it was Sordi's preferred location, the one that was selected. So I think some of those considerations came into the thought process, but again, I don't want to speak for them since I only vote in the case of a tie.
Right. Again, appreciate that you got so much time and energy into this project, really do. And really hate to bring anything to the table at the 13th hour after the 11th hour so late in the day. But when I- hour, so late in the day. But when I talked to the people in my neighborhood, most of them, the majority of them, were unaware of this project. It's hard, might be hard for you to believe, but that's a fact. And not only were they unaware of it, but they're totally opposed to it. But, and you're making your decision knowing that. So I have no further questions.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Deering, for your time. Any other member of the public have any questions for council?
I was just wondering on which side of the road that the so-called sidewalk will be on? The water side or the other side?
So the, it wouldn't be a sidewalk.
No, I know, but the painted, painted side.
Because someone will hear that literally, and be like, sidewalk now. But the extended shoulder, I guess, is what I would call it, paved shoulder, would be on the side that the elementary school and high school is on, until you get to the point, and then it switches to the other side, because that work's already been done.
Okay. I just wondered if there was any difference in the number of trees on the water side as opposed to the other side?
Well, with the widening, there will be a decrease of trees. So the loss of trees was only related if we were going to put in a standalone sidewalk, like you'd see on Augustus or Water Street.
So you're saying you would have to cross the road anyway further down?
Correct.
So wouldn't it make just more sense to just put it on the left-hand side the whole way around?
You would have to cross either way, because the sidewalk that goes down from the Algonquin to King Street's on the right-hand side. So either way, you're going to have to crisscross, right?
Right.
So either, whatever side it is, you're going to have to cross the road at one point.
Right.
This would just continue on the, I'll call it, the elementary school side from the Algonquin to the point.
Right. But it just would be a more continuous walk if you went from King Street on the left-hand side around the point?
From King Street, but there'd be a more continuous walk from the Algonquin to the point if it was on the same side as well. So it depends how you look at it, right? Because it's...
Well, I'm just thinking, a lot of people do, go around the point, and they do the trail.
Yep.
Like, there's quite a loop that way. So, okay, I'm just wondering. Thank you.
The other thing to note is where that crossover is, is there already is a painted sidewalk, or crosswalk. So I think that's a little bit of stats.
Or right at the current trail. It ends there, then you'd cross over to go around the point.
So just to add on to that, so if it ended at, we'll call it King Street, if the elementary school kids were to leave the Vincent Massey Elementary School, they would come out of their gate, and they'd be on the wrong side. They would have to cross there, too, to get to the other side. So it's just, it almost is better flow, because we actually discussed that as well. And because when we were looking at a sidewalk, we were looking at the number of trees, because we're like, which one would have the least impact. But the reality is, is we don't like either of the impacts. So that's why this has been an alternative plan proposed by staff.
No, just wondering which side. Thank you.
Good question. So, yeah, absolutely. Any other questions? All right, anything online, Mr. Nauper?
I've received nothing online. You do have one participant, attendee, if you want to ask.
Have you'd like to see? Maybe in the future, there must be a way that they can message you before in advance, just to say, I have a question. Is that possible to implement?
Well, that's put into the message.
Okay. Because if they don't, if they don't put their hand up or something, I think we should just continue on versus unmute them if that works for you.
Then you're good to continue on.
Right, sounds good.
The question period's been up, so...
Perfect. Well, thank you. That'll wrap up question period. We do have closed session, but I want to leave it open for counselor and mayor's comments, because once I forgot to do that, and you guys forgave me for it. So counselor, any comments for this evening? Deputy Mayor Akogji?
I want to thank staff for doing the dragon boat, and for the dragon boat volunteers, and for the mayor allowing me to go and do the speech thing. I was very happy to do that. So it was, it was a great honor for me to be there. And they have a new trophy that looks like a dragon that was done by someone. It's very, very nice. So I don't know if that's on their site or whatever, but it's a real cute trophy for the dragon boaters, which were the cancer survivors, I think. Anyway, it's really cute. And the second thing I want to mention is September 30th is coming up, as you know. It is Orange T-shirt Day for residential schools. We don't want to forget what happened with residential schools. That being said, I don't know what is in the plan for the 30th, but as soon as I do know, I know staff will put it up on our town website, probably be on Facebook. I don't do Facebook, but probably will be there. And I will get it out to as many people that I know in my circle of friends, might be all two of you, but I certainly will get it out. So that is Orange T-shirt Day. But you don't have to just wear the T-shirt on that day. I see a lot of people wearing the orange T-shirts beforehand. That day is just a special day for remembrance of residential schools, to honor them. And I think it's very important that, even if you don't wear it until September 30th, that's wonderful, but wear it all day on September 30th, and make sure that you answer the questions about why we do wear orange T-shirts on September the 30th. I know I've repeated it several times, and you guys must have it in your heads by now. The second thing is November the 4th, because I'm not sure our council meeting will fall into that, that is Sisters in Spirit. And that's missing and murdered women, indigenous women that were killed. Not so much, well, I won't say not so much here, because there were, there have been missing and murdered indigenous people here. But they do celebrate it on November the 4th as another celebration for the missing and murdered women, indigenous women. So if you see, red dresses are hung up in memory, and purple is the color that they do with the Sisters in Spirit Committee. They do use purple, so to remember them on that day. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Akogji. And I did notice, before you get to St. John on my drive back from Ockton, there's actually some red dresses hung along the woods there. So thank you for drawing some awareness to the, to both of those particular initiatives and important opportunities to reflect as a community. Yep.
Thank you, counsel, for supporting fetal alcohol syndrome. It is something I am attached to, because, again, having been an educator for many years, I did see fetal alcohol syndrome in families, and it is nice to know that we're going to celebrate it in September, which is the first month of school. And welcome back, all you school people. We retired teachers met today to have a luncheon, and we weren't the least bit sad that we weren't going back to the school at all. But congratulations on you going back, and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. It's Counsel Goo Michelle's 24th first day of school today. So Counselor Heenan, I saw your hand.
Yes, your worship. I would just like to take a moment to thank our town manager and staff for the initiative at Indian Point for the redesign. I think that their forethought is very good. It's wonderful that they have the town in mind, and I think that they deserve a round of applause, and I think it's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other member of council? All right, I'm good for this evening. So at 8:28 PM, I'm looking for a mover to go into closed session as per Local Governance Act 681c, information that could cause financial loss or gain to a person of the local government or could jeopardize negotiations leading to an agreement or contract in section 681j, labor and employment matters, including the negotiation of collective agreements. Could I have a mover, please? Counsel Heenan, second by Counsel Goo Michelle, all in favor of going to closed session. Please signify by saying aye. We are in closed session, so we'll give a moment to shut down for the public to leave. Thank you very much for attending.